Good evening, welcome to the July 18th meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. Commissioner Bell, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Turley, would you call the roll, please?
I will, thank you. Commissioner Carroll?
Here.
Commissioner Bell?
Here.
Commissioner Kramer?
Here.
Commissioner Garrison?
Here.
Commissioner Jacko?
Here.
Commissioner Looney?
Here.
Chairman Rosler?
Here.
All present, thank you.
Commissioners, before us are the minutes of our June 6th meeting. You've had a chance to look at them. Do I hear a motion to approve, or are there changes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Garrison?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Chow, any changes to the agenda tonight?
Good evening, Chairman Rosler, no changes tonight, thank you.
Very good. The next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. I have no speaker slips tonight, so unless there's someone who wants to speak to the commission, we will move on, seeing none. Okay. The first item tonight is our public hearing. In our public hearing process, staff will make a presentation, the commissioners will ask questions, the applicant will come up and give additional information about the project, we will open the public hearing to public testimony. You need to fill out a speaker slip if you're going to address the commission, give us your name and address, and you will...well, we have a small crowd, so we won't limit you to three minutes tonight, but...and then we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners will discuss the project and we'll call for the question. So, first item is a continued public hearing from our April 18th meeting. It's P-160210 Santa Anita Town Homes. Ms. Chow?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Rosler. Good evening, Chairman Rosler, Commissioners Patty Chow, Deputy Director of Community Development, City Planner. I'm here this evening to present this PC-160210 case, which is a request for a site development plan, a tentative subdivision map, and a condominium housing permit for Santa Anita Town Homes. As Chairman Rosler pointed out, this is a continued hearing from April 18th, and I'm just gonna give you some quick background information, just to kind of recap the project, before I go into the actual details of the reason for why it got continued. So, the proposed project is on a .97 acre parcel to develop 24 town home condominium units at a density of 24.7 dwelling units per acre. Associated parking areas, drainage improvements, wet and dry utilities, and infrastructure will be coming along with the project, with...served by private common driveways. There are also common open space amenities proposed as part of the project in the form of tot lot areas, lounge areas, private patios, and there's also a barbecue counter unit as proposed part of a lounge area. So, the subject project site is zoned South Gateway in the district of the downtown specific plan area, which allows for a maximum of 30 dwelling units per acre. The general plan designation for the site is mixed use at 30 dwelling units per acre as well. As you can see from the aerial photo, it is surrounded by residential projects or residential uses. To the north, there's commercial, the center of the vaunts, shopping center to immediately to the west, and then to the south, you have some additional commercial, retail, general commercial uses there. A view of the project site from Santa Anita Drive, and a view from the adjacent property to the south, looking at the subject project site. So, at the April 18th this year, Planning Commission heard this particular project. There were several questions that the planning commissioners raised about the site design of the project, and so the decision was to continue this to a date uncertain, so here we are today. And just to recap, the issues that were raised at the April 18th meeting, the applicant was asked to revise the plans to address several of concerns, starting with the cross-sections and wanting...the Planning Commission wanted to see cross-sections of the project, exterior elevations with finished floor elevations, floor-to-ceiling height measurements, and understanding a little more about the existing grade, the proposed project grade, the placement of the garage, and how that was all interacting on the site. So, the applicant went back to their drawings and did revisions to accommodate and include these...all of these particular dimensions to provide more clarity in terms of what's happening on the site, and I will show later on a slide a particular cross-section which actually provides that information to provide more clarity. In terms of circulation and pedestrian pathway throughout the parking lot area, they've added more enhanced paving areas to delineate particular cross areas, crosswalk areas, if we will, within the project site, so that a pedestrian is not just crossing the middle of their driveway, also calls attention to the driver to kind of slow down and make sure that everybody understands this is a residential community, and, you know, just go slow through the...through the project site. So, they provided some enhancements that way. There were some concerns brought up about a couple of the parking garages spaces having a more than normally, I guess, what we would see as far as a backup length coming out of the garage, and a concern with that. Those particular parking spaces were not reconfigured, per se, but the developer went back to look at turning radiuses, doing two-point, three-point turns, and accommodating, you know, as far as the design being able to accommodate those. And our conclusion is that, yes, it does happen in those particular spots, but this is not atypical of an infill development project, where you do have determined a very limited amount of space in certain locations, and so we are confident that by being able to turn around, do a two-point or three-point turn, that they're able to safely exit the project and the driveway. There was also concern about entrance and exit, about the driveway being on a curvy linear type of a fashion where it might not be practical, or just people entering and exiting the project, so what they've done is that they've straightened down the driveway, so it's 24 feet, but it is just straight, there's not like this jogging to create that uncertainty perhaps, you know, in and out of the project site, and you'll see that also on the site plan. A concern was raised about the den conversion, possibility to a bedroom by future owners, and so what they did is that they increased the width of the entrance to four feet, I think that was raised at the last meeting, and also they removed the closet space, so the possibilities of just immediate shift or conversion to a bedroom would be lessened because of the fact that you have these other...we removed, I guess, some of the features that would allow for that to happen. And as far as amenity improvements, they've added some additional amenities as part of like the tot lot, some rocking horse or play structures light for the children, I know that was raised as a concern for families with young children, so they've added also a climbing, a play structure, along with keeping the spa and the barbecue unit, so they're trying to accommodate, obviously, different age groups within the spaces that they had. There are no issues that were raised with regards to landscaping and architectural elevations, the direct access to the units, as I reviewed the minutes, so these particular elements were not modified in any way. This is a depiction of the site plan, I just wanted to call out attention to the common usable, or what we are identifying as common usable, open space areas in green, where the tot lot, the spa, lounge areas, the barbecue counter, and the fire pit are located. The areas circled in blue are really just denoting the particular enhanced paved areas, as I mentioned before, where it would help slow down traffic, the cars, and where people will probably be crossing anyways to get to their units, or to and from the parking spaces to their units. The landscape plan shows 32% of the site being landscaped, which exceeds the 5% requirement in the downtown Vista specific plan, and they are using native and non-native plant materials to...that would require low and moderate water use, as required by the state. So, this is an example of the elevations of the Building 1, and then the Building 3 shown on these slides, the top and the bottom figures, just in terms of the street scene as what it's seen from Santa Anita on the bottom slide, and they've added, as I mentioned before, dimensions to what was called and requested at the last meeting by the commissioners, and as you see, the buildings are not exceeding the height that is allowed, which is a maximum 45 feet, or three stories, whichever is less, and the tallest building, as I recall, I think does not exceed 34 feet, so they're well within the allowed envelope. This is a cross-section, it's a new addition to the set of plans compared to what you've seen before, and you've requested it last time in April, which is so that you can better understand what's happening on the site, so you have the particular cross-sections, AA, BB, and CC at the top, actually, kind of cutting through the site and showing the different...the relationships of the buildings with the proposed, as far as proposed, and what it is existing grade on the site, so now you can understand the placement of the garage, the floors up above, and that how it relates to the surrounding, and the retaining walls, and so forth, that are...that are created on the site. So, in terms of public policy, the general plan and the downtown specific plan, the proposed density is below the maximum of 30, because it is a 24.7, as permitted by the general plan and the downtown specific plan, and the project meets the requirements of the specific plan, as well as the design guidelines for multifamily projects. It addresses amenities, the required amenities per the design guidelines, it has washer and dryer hookups, the outdoor open space areas, and architectural elements to provide variety as part of the project elevations. With that, staff's recommendation is to approve the site development plan, the tentative map, and the condominium housing permit for the 24 units on the .97 acre site just located east of Santa Anita Drive, and I'm available for any questions you may have at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Garrison?
I just want to declare that I did meet with a representative of the developer for a few minutes to talk about some of these issues, but that's the only comment I have at this point.
Commissioner Bell?
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Chow, did we discuss the sound possible issue from the car wash at the last meeting at all?
I've...unfortunately, I was not at the meeting, but I read the minutes, and I've actually watched the video. I don't believe...I'm not...I don't recall that being the case.
And so I raised this not to...without a specific suggestion, I don't have any idea here, but I had my car washed there a month or two ago, and I stood there and I realized, oh yeah, the last time I drove by here was later in the evening when nothing was going on, and the sound from the car wash is pretty big, and it's because the car wash is old, it's not anyone's fault, it's just the way it is. And maybe this is a question for the developer, is there any plan for a fence, which could be a wall, which could be some kind of sound attenuation, because I'm guessing between the three buildings, there's gonna be some reverberation going on during daytime hours. Again, I don't have a suggestion, but I would just raise it because I was there in the middle of the day, and it was definitely noticeable even on the other side of the parking lot, so that's all I have.
Commissioner Looney?
I just wanted to note that I did meet with the applicant for about an hour, went over the items that I had raised during the last meeting, and they were all satisfied.
Okay, very good. I have no speaker slips from either the applicant or the...okay, very good. Name and address, come on. Is his mic on?
Bill Gudin, and I'm the applicant, and I P.O. Box 67511, Rancho Santa Fe. Patsy did a great job in explaining things. The last meeting, a number of issues were raised, and I believe, as much as we don't like to go back and go to the drawing boards, sometimes these issues help the situation, and a lot of the issues we addressed, I believe, improved the project. Straightening the driveway, I think, was a big help. Changing the amenities for...how we did the amenity package as far as the lounge area and the tot lot, making one large lounge area that I think...and we added some amenities, too. We added a spa, which wasn't originally there. I did...I looked at five different studies that were done on what people want in these type of projects, and the tot lot wasn't on the list, that doesn't mean it wasn't important, it just wasn't at the top, so we isolated...and I didn't...and the lounge area is really important, people want to be able to have their families over there and barbecue, whatever, so all the things that were pretty much high on the list, except there's a couple items we couldn't get on there, but almost all the things on the list, we've gotten on there now. The top ones were the pool, we got a spa, the private patios and decks, which we have, a grilling station, fire pits or fireplaces, we got the fire pit, and in general, we have an outdoor kitchen, which is also high on the list, and they want...they want an area that has comfortable seating and places for their family to do things. So, I believe by taking the tot lot and moving it to the center of the project, it helped isolate that from a bigger, larger area that can be used by the families. A number of the other issues were the enhanced...the enhanced paving, I think's a good deal, because it allows you to have walkways and pathways that are established, and can be seen by the cars, so people that are transmating on the angles through the project can be...it's a nice place to walk, you can see it, and it kind of identifies what's going on. We tried to take everything that was on the list and fix it, and I don't know if there's anything...the...splitting the four-foot opening, we got more than four feet, we had to rearrange some of the floor plans, because we couldn't get the four-foot opening, and actually in doing so, it didn't hurt the floor plans, it just took a little effort to get it so that it all worked out, and I'm trying to think what else we had. That was...oh, and the parking, there was one parking stall that was noted to be kind of sticking out as you came up the driveway. By changing some of the...moving that stall farther to the south, we were able to get it so it's tucked in behind the landscape area. So, I think a lot of this, as I said, I don't like being delayed a couple months, but it does...I think it helped the project overall. As far as the car wash goes, it's...it was raised a year, over a year ago, by some of the neighbors, and they're saying, we really are happy you're putting this project in, so you can buffer us from the daggone car wash, and we didn't have a single person here that was against the project, and I was hoping that...I'm sure you have some noise restrictions that...for businesses, I was hoping that maybe some of their squeaky equipment could be addressed, and I mean, really, putting a bit...the problem with sound is it does travel up, and if we put a wall, even if we put a five-foot wall in there, it would be minimal as far as helping with the sound attenuation. So, I'm hoping, since I think we are adding...I'm pretty proud of the project, I think we're adding a very nice aesthetically pleasing project to the community, and I'm hoping that we can get some...that they'll work with us on either updating their equipment or getting it fixed, because it is...it is noticeably noisy. We can't do much to protect it, so we're hoping we can work with them, and you all come up with something that works for everybody. Other than that, if there's any questions, I'm sure there are.
Commissioner Carroll has a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. You mentioned the enhanced pavers, the plan calls it as enhanced pedestrian walk, 36-inch wide, pavers or painted stripe, so is it up in the air? What's gonna be?
No, we...originally, we're gonna...originally, I can't remember which commissioner asked for it, Mr. Garrison did, we were talking about doing some kind of a striping, but I think that the enhanced paving will be better for the project. I think striping's gonna look a little...
Yeah, I agree.
...sterile, so...
It's gonna last longer, too.
Yeah, it'll...and it'll look...it just looks better, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Very good. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Is there any member of the public who would like to address the commission on the project? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and open it up to Commissioner discussion. Commissioner Garrison?
I just want to say, I had a lot of concerns about this when it was early design review, and I think the applicant has addressed those concerns that I have, and I'm pretty pleased with the project now.
Very good. Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the project, I think that they've done a really good job addressing all of our issues, and I think it's going to really enhance that area. I mean, it's something pleasing to look at, and maybe the gym will follow suit, and, you know, we have the next phase of, you know, three more buildings or so, so I will be in support of the project. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. I'm very pleased with the way this has turned out, too, and I want to say again, I really like your landscape plan. If it's appropriate, I'd like to go ahead and move approval.
Let's get Commissioner Looney's concern, and then we'll...I'll let you make the motion.
Well, it's not really a concern, it's just that Mr. Gudin has worked and worked and worked, did a good job. I asked some pretty pointed questions last time, he addressed each one of them, and anything's gonna look better than that we did lot that we've got right now. We did bring up the sound of car wash extensively. The really...the only solution, because I've gone through this exercise quite a bit, is you gotta replace the equipment. You can put landscaping up, you can put sound walls up, the wind carries the sound, and it's just...it's one of the un...it's one of those elements of nature that we haven't figured out how to deflect yet, so...but I think the applicant did a great job.
Okay. Commissioner Jackal?
Okay, well, so I will then move to adopt Resolution 2017 next, approving a site development plan, tentative subdivision map, and condominium housing permit for 24 condominium townhouse units on a .97 acre site located just east of Santa Anita Drive and north of South Santa Fe Avenue in the South Gateway District of the downtown specific plan area, and I think that will be a great project.
Commissioner Kramer, are you going to second?
I second the motion.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Jackal, would you be open to modifying that to specify that the...those pedestrian paths are, in fact, enhanced pavers and not painted stripes?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? All right, please vote. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you very much for modifying your plans for us. I think we have to shuffle staff here for a second, so we'll take a moment. Just a bit of history for the commissioners while we're moving forward. This next project, when it was a photo kiosk, it was one of the very first site development plans that was approved in this city back in '74. They...it was a new process, and they...I think you'll find my signature on some of the documents concerned with it, but it also led to the requirement for drive-throughs, having a special use permit. At the...when this was approved, there wasn't that requirement, and after several iterations of how traffic would circulate around the photo map, it was decided...the planning director at that time decided, well, we need to do these things under use permits, and so the ordinance was changed.
You could do that at 15 back then?
Yeah. All right. Mr. Reisner, would you tell us about the special use permit for the drive-through facility at 823 East Vista Way?
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you tonight is a special use permit inclusive of a plot plan for the proposed Black Rock Coffee Bar. The application number is P-17-0080. The subject site is addressed at 823 East Vista Way. The site is located northeast of the intersection of Townsite Drive and East Vista Way. The site is one legal lot, maintains an area of approximately .16 acres, and is currently developed with a vacant drive-through coffee kiosk. Here's a couple photos of the existing site, as well as aerial of the site itself. The top photograph was taken from East Vista Way, and the lower photograph was taken from Surrounding land uses include the Barnacle Gasoline Station to the north, an office building to the east, Jack-in-the-Box Restaurant to the south, as well as commercial uses to the west across East Vista Way. The general plan land use designation for the site is Neighborhood Commercial, CN. That designation allows for commercial uses, as well as eating and drinking establishments. The zoning of the site is Commercial, C1. The C1 zone permits such uses as commercial, retail businesses, as well as restaurant uses. The project before you includes a special use permit inclusive of a plot plan for the development of a 504-square-foot drive-through coffee shop. The proposed facility will not include interior dining, however, it will provide for a walk-up window. Black Rock Coffee Bar will provide coffee, smoothies, as well as baked items that will be prepared off-site. Proposed hours of operation will be from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily, and the proposed operations requires a total of two employees. The submitted site plan proposes demolition of the existing kiosk on-site and construction of a 504-square-foot coffee shop building. The proposed building has been designed to maintain a drive-up window along the north elevation of the building, as well as a walk-up window on the south elevation. The proposed drive-through lane will span along the east elevation of the building, along the north elevation of the building, and provide a total of six queuing spaces. In addition to the building and the drive-through lane, the site will also provide three parking spaces as required by code. The site plan also includes landscape improvements for a total of 1,237 square feet. The landscape improvements would include a new front landscape setback, as well as a rear landscape setback, and interior parking lot landscape improvements as well. As I indicated before, there will be no interior dining or waiting area within the building. The floor plan indicates the building will be configured to accommodate a prepping area, walk-in cooler, as well as restroom facilities. The architectural style for the building reflects a contemporary style, utilizing smooth white stucco exterior finish, enhanced with stone veneer accents. Other architectural enhancements include steel canopy with decorative outriggers, landscape trellises, as well as facade lighting and storefront windows. The proposed building has been designed to maintain a parapet-style roof and enhance with a tower element along the front elevations of the building. Here's kind of a before and after slide. On the left-hand side of the slide, there's a photograph of the existing dilapidated kiosk that's out there today, and then off to the right... kiosk that's out there today, and then off to the right is the proposed Black Rock Coffee Bar building before you tonight. In regards to the general plan, the proposed use is consistent with the neighborhood commercial designation for the property. In regards to the zoning, the project does meet all applicable development standards within the C-1 zone. The use is consistent with other uses within the area along East Vista Way. The site plan has been designed to provide successful on-site circulation, and adequate queuing spaces have been provided in order to accommodate the drive-through facility. With that, staff is recommending the Planning Commission grant a special use permit inclusive of a plot plan to demolish the existing drive-through kiosk and construct a new 504-square-foot drive-through coffee facility at 823 East Vista Way. That concludes staff's report. The applicant, as well as the project architects here, to introduce themselves and to answer any questions you might have tonight. Thank you.
We've got several commissioners that would like to speak. Do you have questions of staff, or would you like to hear from the applicant first? Okay. Mr. Patrick Kellet? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Kellet. My wife, Leanne, and I are the applicants. We reside at 4190 Sunny Hill Drive in Carlsbad, and it's been a long time getting here, and we're very grateful to be here to answer any of your questions. I did want to introduce our, our team. John Strominger is a very dear friend, licensed civil engineer, heck of a musician, and jack of all trades. He's here tonight, as well as our architect, who I've met through this process, Michael Cant, and Michael is here to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Is that all you wanted to say?
Yes.
At this point? Okay, then we'll start with Commissioner Jackal.
Thank you, and I think it sounds like a, a great facility to be in, in Vista. My one concern, especially when I drove around, is that the site is very bare-naked, and my sheet index said that I would have an LC-1 landscape plan, and I don't have one. So I'm really concerned about landscaping. I, I saw Mr. Ressler's presentation that there is landscaping planned.
Should be in that package, yes.
That I'd love to know what it is.
Unfortunately, the applicant did submit a landscape plan. Unfortunately, the packets that were delivered to you did not include that landscape plan. Let me see if I can find a reduced version, or actually, I left the other plan. Yeah, unfortunately, that's just the site plan. It doesn't actually reflect the improvements to the landscape plan. We'd have to take a quick break. I can go back into my office and grab that plan. I know the street tree would be 24-inch Brisbane box along East Vista Way.
Can you put the, the landscape thing back up?
Sure. This is just a colored version of the site plan, but it would include a Brisbane box tree along East Vista Way, as well as crepe myrtle trees within the parking lot and along the easterly edge of the, the rear of the site.
What about along the rear of the site facing the office buildings?
Say that, Ian, I'm sorry?
The rear of the site facing the office buildings?
Those would be crepe myrtles and...
That's where that would be.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, and is, is there some, aside from the trees, are there some more low, low-growing?
Yes, yeah, there will be, there will be five-gallon and, I think, 10-gallon or something plants all throughout.
Yeah, there'll be shrubbery and ground cover in all the areas that you're, that are indicated in green here as well, and the landscape plan has been reviewed by the contract landscape architect for the city and has been approved, subject to the conditions before you tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
In addition, the, the staff asked us during the initial phases that we include a enhanced fencing along the back, so that it's some kind of a wrought iron fencing, and, and I don't know whether any kind of trellising might be on there for, for plants as well.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Garrison?
Two questions. One, your logo has a red star.
Correct.
Is there any significance to that? And the reason I'm asking is the company I worked for prior to retirement was Aramark, and they had a red star, and they are in the food service business. Is there any connection there?
I'm not aware of one. I, I know that the name Black Rock comes from Kauai, where they're, the Conapali Beach, where they had the last lava flow on, excuse me, on Maui, the last lava flow was called Black Rock. So that's where the name came from, but the, the red star, I'm not sure. It might have something to do with the fact that the, the elephant in the room in the coffee industry has that name in their title, so it might have something to do with that.
Well, I, I just wanted to mention that. I presently own zero stock and have no association with that company, but I did spend 40 years with them, so that's why...
Well, I should, I should mention, by the way, that Marty Mayers of Black Rock was going to be here tonight. He had a death in the family, and so he is in Oregon, unfortunately, tonight for a funeral tomorrow. And Black Rock was founded out of Portland, and the three families, one of them came here to, to start some locations in Southern California. There's only one location in California, in Oceanside currently. And in terms of the, the logo and all of that, I do know that it's, it's all copyrighted and everything, so I, I do know that.
Okay, good. Second question is circulation. If I come in through, in front of the office buildings, and in other words, I come in through the light and up through the cul-de-sac over by the office building and come in and get my coffee, can I go out the same way I came in? Because these, these prints say arrows only go that direction.
Correct. Jack-in-the-Box has a drive-through there, so there is no, what is that? Was that west? Westbound lane going back that way? They have to exit out onto East Vista Way.
So if you were leaving with your coffee, you would either have to go right or go left across four lanes?
Well, I guess they could go, take a very sharp left turn and go in front by the, the area where the signage is in front. Let me, I brought a pointer so I can...
Yeah, actually...
So you could, I suppose, turn here and come this way and go out that way, but it'd be, it'd be very tight to do that. I don't know how many people would do that.
If they wanted to, they could also go here and go in front of Jack-in-the-Box and come down and come out that exit onto Townsite as well.
Yes, it is open.
There's another possibility, you know? I don't know if that'd be utilized on a regular basis, but there is availability...
But as far as back here, you can only go this direction?
Correct. One direction.
Either that way or that way, but you can go that way. Okay.
Right.
Thank you. Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Chairman. I see that there are three parking places and two employees. So my first question is, two employees per shift, or two employees, one in the morning, one in the afternoon?
Per shift.
Per shift. So three parking places would be two employees and one customer?
Correct.
If it was a walk-up. So if he was walking up and I wanted to walk up, where would I park? Just find a place by the crepe myrtles?
Well, a couple things. Black Rock's business model is, is predicated on the drive-through business.
Okay.
So 99, more than 99% of their business is the drive-through.
Okay.
In their Oceanside location, they average less than two walk-ups a day, and of those two walk-ups, they are, they don't drive to the site. They're actually neighboring business owners who walk over for a cup of coffee. So there is that issue, you know, you know, realization. However, there is also the, the, the understanding that this site might, in fact, because off, is it Townsite? Off Townsite, they're planning 108 units, I believe, with the new bridge that goes across. So there is the potential with the walking trail there that more people will walk to the site, but again, those are walking visitors. They're not really bringing cars. If they bring a car from those 108 units, my assumption is they're going to work, they're going to go through the drive-through and continue on to work. So those would be my thoughts on that.
Okay, and the parking places are fully striped?
Correct.
Okay. The planters that are close to the building, is it in the ground, or are they pots, or wine barrels, or combination of both?
No, our intention is in the ground, because that's an ADA sidewalk, and we don't want to obstruct it in any way.
Perfect. And where in Oceanside?
Where in Oceanside is the current location?
Yes.
It's at Oceanside Boulevard.
1918 Oceanside Boulevard.
About, about quarter to a half mile east of the five on Oceanside Boulevard.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
Very good. Commissioner Looney?
Couple things. Your building is going to look a heck of a lot better than what's been there.
Well, I hope so.
So that's, that's great. Setbacks. Does a trash enclosure have to adhere to setbacks?
Actually, in the commercial zone, there's no rear yard setback.
Okay. Coming back to a question that you had on landscaping, are those crepe myrtles 24-inch boxes, or are they 15-gallons? Because it'd be nice to get some height to them.
I believe if they wanted large height...
They're 24-inch box.
24-inch box.
Okay, that would be good. One of the things that I'd like to have a, I got a couple questions about, and that's a trash enclosure. On the site plan, we show a seven by 20.
Okay.
The floor plan shows a seven by 17, and then your quarter-inch front elevation also shows it as 17. So if we could get some consistency there, if it's 20 feet or 17 feet, that would be good.
Do you want to tell? Talk. Hi, I'm John Strominger. I'm the civil engineer. The civil plan is the correct plan. It shows 20 feet. Edco, we, we met with the Edco people. They were happy with 17 feet. That's all they require for their trash bins.
Okay.
But our plan shows 20, and the other plan should reflect that as well.
Okay, so maybe that could just be updated. Another item, I think you've done a great job, the architect's done a great job, on the aesthetics of the structure. I would like to see that trash enclosure to be brought up three or four notches aesthetically to where it begins to match something closer to the building. Because right now, we've got a concrete block, we've got three-inch tube steel, we've got a wood beam, and there's no wood on the main structure. If you could embellish that three or four notches to make it not so much of an eyesore, but I think you could create something without spending a lot of money, just to put a skin on it, and to put that skin that matches the mother building.
Right.
I think you'd have a much stronger project.
Yeah, obviously, one of the concerns with skinning it, for example, with the stucco product or something, is you might create a tagging hazard. So obviously, we'd be open to that, to doing what we need to do, but it would be trying to figure out, maybe we could put some vines or something that, that breaks it up, so it's not, you know, I don't know. But we could certainly work with staff and figure something out.
Or maybe you use split-face block, something like that.
Correct.
But if you could get rid of that wood beam, it just doesn't match...
Yeah, we probably should make it a steel I-beam to match with the awnings on the building.
Yeah, just take some of the detail and articulation that you have on the main building. If you bring it back over on that trash enclosure, I think it'll just help your project in a significant manner.
Okay.
Not trying to spend your money, but...
No, no, that's all right.
In a way, I...
I'd rather it look better.
And that's all.
Okay. Commissioner Bell?
Speaking of spending your money, tell me about the remote menu option. Obviously, we, these guys approved a Starbucks that went in up on Civic Center a little while back that I use very frequently, and I'm very happy with it. Good job, everyone. But it sounds like you guys aren't putting in remote ordering at this point.
Yeah, Black Rock has one location in Tigard, Oregon, where they did a remote ordering board, and they don't like it. So they, they want a more personal contact, and my argument to them is if they understood how much faster it would make their service, they might like it. So I would like to have the option to pull, you know, conduit and other things, so that if we wanted to do, for example, full video, where you're actually seeing the person's face, I think it might meet their objections and also speed the line in terms of their, their drive-through.
So would you answer my next question? You're going to prepare for the board as if you are going to be able to do it in the future?
Yeah, I would like to. That's why I wanted to make everyone aware during the application process, that I think they will eventually come around, but I don't, I don't know where they are on that right now.
And then, is there any guidance on what size or shape that might take? I mean, I assume this isn't going to be a, not to pick on McDonald's, but a large McDonald's board, especially if it's a limited menu and just coffee.
Correct. They have a very, almost like, they're not like In-N-Out in terms of the line, but they're like In-N-Out in terms of the menu. It's a very simple, very, you know, you could see it the one, I, I don't think they have more than 20 total items. So it wouldn't be, you know, multiple video screens like a McDonald's with multiple, you know, avenues into the drive-through. It's not like that. It's a very limited menu.
And then, are you going to pull conduits for both entrances? Because it looks like you have two entrances going into the single line.
Well, the reason for that is we had to leave, because of the deed restriction, you have to leave an opening for McDonald, or for Jack-in-the-Box, excuse me, to access its overflow parking on that side. And because of that, it has to remain open. As a result, some people are going to try to come that way, so we wanted to stripe it so that at least people understood, if they're following that arrow, they're going into the drive-through.
So if you are going to put a board in, it would probably be where the sidewalk meets the landscape?
Correct.
Okay.
Somewhere in that area.
And I can just, I mean, I don't know how many of you use the Starbucks on Civic Center, but it's very non-intrusive. That size of board, especially using electronics and video instead of a set menu board that has to be physically changed, seems reasonable in that place, so I'm fine with that. Thanks for clearing that up.
Absolutely.
So Black Rock's business model, how long do they anticipate somebody's going to be at the service window?
They try to keep it to where each car coming through, it's less than one minute.
Okay.
Okay? But they find that they, obviously, that, that might expand a little bit in the mornings, because they don't, they don't actually keep coffee that has already been brewed. They don't have brewed coffee. They literally make it to order as you come.
Oh, wow.
And so they have, they have some Mars cocoa espresso machines, which operate very quickly, but they're, it's not made until you order it.
Okay. So a minute, and, and you're on your way...
Correct.
With, with your cup of coffee or...
Yeah, and, and it's, and it's a business model where if you can't adhere to that, your customers are going to go elsewhere.
Yeah.
So they have to, they have to keep it going.
All right, very good.
Yeah.
One final question for, for Michael. How come a plot plan and not a site development plan? Pardon?
Size of the building, Patsy? Yeah, and I can't remember what the threshold is at this point, but there's a threshold in terms of the square footage of a commercial building kicking it up to a site development plan, or anything lower than, than that threshold would be at the plot plan, and that's what dictates the entitlement.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good job fixing one of my old problems, but...
[laughing]
All right, commissioners, any discussion on the project? Or can we hear a motion? Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like it. I can hardly wait for you to get here. So with that said, I would like to adopt Resolution 2017 next, granting a special use permit inclusive of the site, excuse me, the plot plan, to demolish an existing drive-through coffee kiosk and construct a new 504-square-foot drive-through coffee facility at 823 East Vista Way. Also included in my motion are making the changes that Commissioner Looney suggested for the trash, and, anything else? Nope?
Yeah, 24-inch box.
Just to confirm that, we'll make sure that the condition, 24-inch box trees on-site.
Okay, including the 24-inch box trees.
Is there a second? Commissioner Garrison?
I second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and second for approval. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Looking forward to getting a cup of coffee. Mr. Winters? The next item on the agenda is not a public hearing, but it is, we will take public testimony. It's an early design review request for general plan amendment, zone change, condominium housing permit, tentative map, and site development plan for 57 detached condominiums down on Sycamore. tentative map, and site development plan for fifty-seven detached condominiums down on Sycamore Avenue and Watson Way. Mr. Winters?
Is that better?
Very much.
Thank you. Planning Case P fifteen, uh, P seventeen zero two four six for fifty-seven detached condominiums at the corner of Sycamore and Watson. For the benefit of the listening audience, as the commissioners know, the purpose of the EDR is to provide an opportunity for the commission to review the initial, initial proposal and provide preliminary advisory comments to the project applicant. The proposal has not been routed or fully reviewed by all city staff. It's been reviewed only in terms of basic zoning compliance. The applicant will answer specific questions about the project design and the thought process behind the initial proposal. No formal vote or action is required or necessary for an EDR item. The project's scope, as mentioned, a preliminary proposal to develop fifty-seven detached condominium units on seven point eight acres of an eleven acre site. The subject site is at the corner of Sycamore Avenue and Watson Way. That's a southwest corner. The site is currently developed with one single-family residence, and the rest of the project site is vacant. This is an aerial view of the area. It shows the entire project area boundary, which is the eleven point one acres. The proposed project area is seven point eight acres of that. And that is the shaded area here highlighted. Going on to the surrounding land uses, to the east is a Sycamore Business Park and Medical Center across Sycamore. To the north is Kidstown, Montessori School, and single-family residences. To the west is natural drainage area before you get to the Vista Optimist Club ball fields. To the south, along Sycamore and on, I'm sorry, I forgot the side street name there, but it's single-family residences on Woodcrest Lane, as it says in the slide. General plan designation currently is low-density residential and commercial neighborhood. The proposed change would be for medium-density residential on seven point eight acres of the site. The zoning is estate residential and C-one commercial on the property as it is now. The proposed change would modify it to residential multifamily with a maximum of ten units per acre allowed. On February twenty-eighth, the city council discussed the project and gave input that included provision of adequate recreational amenities, provision of adequate parking, and the potential positive impact for neighborhood businesses with the addition of the residences to the neighborhood. The project would require a general plan amendment, zone change, site development plan, condominium housing permit, tentative subdivision map, as well as secret review and a landscape plan review. The density, it would be approximately seven point three dwelling units per acre. Access would be from Watson Way to the north, and the project would have private internal streets with a gated entrance. The square footage range for the homes would be from eighteen hundred and eight to two thousand three hundred sixty-seven square feet. It would feature two-car garages. There would be twenty-three bedroom units and thirty-seven four-bedroom units. This is a conceptual diagram for the project site, showing landscaped areas, the internal street network, and the single-family detached residences. Parking would be provided at four per unit, which is the two garage spaces, two driveway parking spaces, totaling one hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred twenty-eight spaces for all the residences. There's also twenty-three streets, parking spaces provided, for a total of two hundred and fifty-one spaces. Site amenities include a pool, clubhouse, and totlot area. The architectural for the site includes a combination of Spanish and Monterey architectural styles that include stucco exteriors, decorative light fixtures, window shutters, window banding, ornamental iron, and concrete tile roofing. All units would include sectional garage doors facing the interior streets. Here's another view, showing an angled view of the street frontage. An example floor plan for the four-bedroom, two-point-five-bath unit, just over two thousand square feet. Second floor of the unit would have the four bedrooms, master bathroom, a secondary bathroom. Ground floor would include the family room or great room, kitchen area, garage, and entry area. Staff requests the planning commission provide comments to the applicant related to the proposed design of the project. And that completes staff's presentation. The architect, I'm sorry, the applicant is here to answer any questions as well.
Does the applicant have a presentation or additional information that they want to provide?
There is an app, a presentation by the applicant.
Okay, good.
Good evening, Chair Rossler, members of the planning commission. My name is Lester Tucker. I'm the vice president of forward planning for MLC Holdings. Thrilled to be here tonight. It seems like it's been a long time coming for, for an early design review. And I'll keep my, my comments brief. Chris did a great job of giving an overview, but I'll just give you a brief, brief background. Before I do that, I wanted to thank Chris, as well as Mr. Conley, who've been, you know, very forthright, honest, and tough, but fair by all measure. And that's all we can ask for when we're trying to bring a project to a city. So they've definitely been helpful and responsive and have helped us create what I think is thus far a, a really good start on a great project. MLC Holdings, not a household name. It's no secret, it's Meritage Land Company. We are a small unit of Meritage Homes. We're a wholly owned subsidiary of Meritage Homes focused strictly on infill entitlements in coastal areas throughout California. Our sole purpose is to create opportunities for our homebuilding operations to come in behind us and actually build new home communities. And so we're a little bit unique in that we are out here entitling land and building it as well. And so the quality of the community during the entitlement is consistent with the quality of the community when it actually gets built out. So at any rate, recently, we've completed entitlements both in Northern and Southern California, large and small. Recently, a forty-some-odd unit approval in Chino, as well as an annexation that's undergoing now. A hundred and forty townhome units, along with a ninety-three-door Marriott residence in, in Hayward. And since the beginning of two thousand fifteen, we've either entitled or currently control over eight hundred lots in the state. Meritage, a very large public builder. Communities as close as four miles away from here. If you recall my last presentation, hopefully, some of you walked a home, or maybe even bought one. We love to sell you one. We're also working on another great piece of property and entitlement in the city of Vista. For those of you that are aware, on Buena Vista, on Buena Vista Road. And I look forward to seeing you all again soon with the progress on that, on that project, and hopefully bringing it to completion sometime later this year. We're here tonight to just briefly give you the overview on what we're calling the Sycamore and Watson opportunity. The site is located, as you can kind of see on the maps, kind of hard to read, but just south of the freeway at the intersection of Watson and Sycamore. I'm really here for, for your thoughts, so I haven't prepared a lot of slides and don't have a lengthy presentation. So I'll just kind of zip through. Here is our aerial view of the site. I'm going to say that's looking westerly fashion, with Optimist Club beyond our site, Watson Way on the right, and Sycamore at the bottom there. We've spent quite a bit of time, as I mentioned earlier. It all looks easy from here, but the site is, it's quite complicated. It's, it's very challenging from a terrain standpoint, from an access standpoint. We have an existing homeowner who is also one of our sellers, who needs to be protected in his residence and what he may like to do at some point. So it's been a unique, fun challenge to try and figure out. We, we, I think, have, have cracked the code, as some people like to say. We started with a very rectilinear community. When you're going through a seventy-day or a sixty-day due diligence, you're trying to really get traction on, can we make something work here? It's never our, our best effort during that period of time. We brought this, as Chris had mentioned in February, to city council for a preliminary review. We really took to heart all the comments. We've spent a lot of time trying to incorporate every aspect that we heard from not only city council, but members of the public as well. We wanted to create something that really met the aesthetics that the city was looking for, that the city demands, as well as maintain a reasonable development budget. As you know, a hilly site with a lot of rocks starts to get really expensive. That might be one reason the site hasn't, hasn't been developed previously, but. And then kind of maintain the yield. So just some of the most salient comments we heard from council, I just put a few up here. Chris mentioned a couple, maybe consider reducing the number of homes. More neighborhood amenities, better amenities. More street variation, as, as you saw, it's pretty, very rectilinear and not very exciting there. Try to centralize the neighborhood park amenity better and provide a pedestrian connection out to Sycamore if, if, if we were able to. The real message was kind of, you need to come and wow us. And so here's our wow plan. We spent a lot of time revising this. Anecdotally, I'll share with you that there's a local watering hole that we spent a lot of time in here with our civil engineer, who's actually born and raised and still lives in Vista. He's like, we're going to have to go to the unnamed watering hole and spend some time on the table. And, and this really is what started to become more of a neighborhood, more of a community. We incorporated cul-de-sacs. It provides safety. It provides a lot of sense of community within a cul-de-sac. If any of you've ever lived in a cul-de-sac or a really small community, you start to become really close with the neighbors and friends. So creative minds in downtown Vista at work here. Thanks, buddy. So we have actually reduced the yield on the, on the plan, the yield being the number of homes. We've gone from sixty-one homes down to fifty-seven. We dramatically improved the neighborhood amenities to include a swimming pool with a large deck area, a neighborhood clubhouse for parties, community events, and everybody's favorite community event, the HOA board meetings. We have outdoor seating with a barbecue area. We, we also have a, a separate play area. And it's kind of hard to see, but if you can see my pointer, this is the pool, rec building, and barbecue area. We have a totlot in this area, which typically is fenced off from the pool for safety reasons, but a totlot, which is adjacent, so everybody can kind of be in the same location here. But we also have a separate, separately located pet park with benches and doggy stations and that kind of thing here, as well as a pedestrian connection out to Sycamore here through. Also, this will serve as an EVA, but it will be landscaped in a manner consistent with emergency access. And we're thinking about potentially putting additional doggy stations over here as well, so that that can serve as more of a fenced-off locations, maybe for dogs to run. But the, the aesthetic of the community, though, I think, is what has risen by leaps and bounds here. From a walkability standpoint, your eye always has something new and interesting to look at versus just walking down square grid streets. So I think this is going to be a really lovely place to live. We've increased the, the safety, the privacy by incorporating the cul-de-sacs. Chris mentioned that this community was gated. Currently, we're not planning on gating it. We're creating an enhanced entry. So I'm not sure, maybe there was a miscommunication on our part, so I apologize for that. If that's something that staff is, and the council is interested in, you know, we're certainly willing to entertain it, and it seems like we have the throat to potentially accommodate that if it's something that would be desirable. I'll just quickly go through a couple of other changes that we, well, I think I touched on all those. Here's a blow-up of the pool and clubhouse amenity that you can see better. Clubhouse area here, large pool deck around, barbecue area here, and seating, outdoor, not outdoor, indoor shower, and restrooms. And then this is the totlot area on the side here with the purple striping. Architecturally, well, just a couple of details quickly. Three plan types are planned, three unit types, if you will, all with three elevational styles each. Spanish vernacular, Mediterranean vernacular, eighteen to twenty-four hundred square feet, three and four bedroom, two-car attached garages, two cars in every driveway, for a total of two hundred and fifty parking stalls on the site, four point four. Prices are expected to, to start in the, in the mid-six hundreds. And then I know we showed you some, some graphics up there earlier that I'm not very proud of, so I wanted to make sure to bring you some pictures, because we haven't really refined, we haven't really boosted our architectural expenses up yet to show you some really good graphics. So I thought we'd take some pictures of some representative model homes to give you a better idea of the architectural character and quality that we expect to be providing. So that's the end of my presentation. I'm glad to answer questions. And I also have my architect and civil engineer here, and our project manager, in case anything gets too technical. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Tucker? Mr. Garrison?
Yes, humor me for a second. Why are these detached condos versus single-family homes?
That's a good question. In order for the single-family detached neighborhood on lot sizes consistent with those that we're proposing here, we process this as a condominium map at ten units per acre. And I can let Chris maybe opine more, in a more detailed fashion with respect to that question.
So you can get more units in there by calling it a detached condominium than if it was a single-family residence?
Care to weigh in on that question?
That's essentially correct, Commissioner. Currently, the project site is zoned for a combination of low-density and mostly commercial neighborhood to where it wouldn't allow a residential development at all. With the proposed zone change that they brought to the city council, they're proposing something that would be more in the range of the Sycamore Estates to the north and the south of the project site, which ranges from approximately, I believe I have a little bit of data here.
I think it's five point eight and five point oh, according to a letter that we got from John Conley.
Okay, those would be the, yeah, I believe there's.
So those single-family homes in that immediate area are five point eight and five point oh residence units per acre, but this proposal is for seven point three dwelling units per acre? Just matter of information.
I'll also share with you, just anecdotally, that part of our intention is to try and create attainable single-family housing. And if we were to maintain the, maybe four units per acre, you know, ten, twelve thousand square foot lots, homes at land values now, homes start to exceed nine hundred and a million. And the, the idea here is to provide housing for people that actually live and work in Vista, to try to minimize people's commutes. And so we're trying to be down the price scale to create scale in terms of the number of units. And that's another reason that we would propose and are confident that the density that we're proposing is still going to lead to a great neighborhood.
Just getting back to the city council's comments about neighbors.
Yes, sir.
And that's kind of where I was coming from on that. Because it seems like some of these are up to twenty-one dwelling units, but some are as low as five.
Yes, sir.
So this is, seemed like a pretty good balance, but I just want to, you know, kind of get that on the record.
I appreciate the question, because it is a fair question. And we have, as part of our process, we do spend a lot of time in the neighborhood knocking on doors. We're working on a meeting with a presentation to the HOA off of Watson. I don't think we're going to make their meeting tomorrow, but the next meeting, we're going to be able to present that and talk to their neighbors about what's important to them in any kind of new home development. and talk to their neighbors about what's important to them in any kind of new home development.
My second question is, the school across the street in Watson, is there street parking in front of that? And will this potentially create a conflict with people parking at the school? Isn't that a school right across Watson, daycare or...?
There is a daycare across the street on Watson, and I'll defer to Chris to answer in terms of the parking.
That's correct, Commissioner. There is a school right across the street. The project entrance drive would just be a little, towards the north side of that. I'll have to, I don't know if there's street parking available there. My initial thought is there is. I'm not sure if the city planner might know, be able to verify. We believe there is street parking available there.
Because this is proposing, proposing street parking on this side of Watson. So I assume that means there is street parking on the other side of Watson, correct?
The project's site plan actually includes 23 street parking spaces on the internal streets.
Internal?
Yes.
That didn't include anything on Watson?
Those numbers did not include parking on Watson off-site.
Okay, that clarifies it. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staying with Commissioner Garrison's thought plan, are these individual detached condominiums? Do they have fencing around them?
Yes, they live, if you were to drive into the community, you would have no idea that this was entitled and vis-a-vis a condominium map. This will be a very traditional, single-family-looking neighborhood with side yard fences and setbacks and rear yards that are usable, consistent with the 10 DU per acre zoning within the city of Vista, yes.
Okay. So could you please put up your conceptual site grading plan that you had up? I think it was your second slide.
I'm gonna have to ask Chris to put that up.
I think it was your second slide.
They have to dumb down the presentations for me. I'm sorry, I don't have the grading plan.
That one, back up. Okay. So I see the rectangle, it would be the lower-left corner, and that's the home that we're trying to preserve. Is that correct?
I'll try to show you on the pointer, yes. This is a portion of the property owned by this homeowner here. It's a single-family home with a pool, yes.
What size is that lot, out of curiosity?
That's a great question, Commissioner. It's a little convoluted out here with, I believe we have seven parcels and three different ownership entities. A portion of the site that we are purchasing from the owner of this lot here, his property extends kind of in this fashion, all the way down to the creek area and then back up. So if I was to guess, I would say, which his whole lot includes all of this today. There's a tennis court here. If you've driven Watson, his home has quite a few different uses, a large knoll, rocky knoll here, and a private tennis court that he no longer uses. So we are purchasing a portion of his property for our entrance and for this cul-de-sac here, and he's retaining ownership of all of this. I would guess, if I was, that say that his acreage is probably somewhere between two and three and a half.
Looks bigger. So where's Street B, so just above his little rectangle plot, there's a...
Cul-de-sac? Mm-hmm, this one?
Yes. So go to the left of that.
Okay.
Okay. That area there is part of the project, but we're not building on it, is that correct?
No. As a matter of fact, only the colored area you see here is the portion of the project, is the project. The remainder, if you will, muted areas are excluded from the application entirely.
Okay. And all of those are owned by that rectangle guy?
The remainder of the property down here, yes, is all owned by this homeowner here.
Okay. Okay. Hold on, I gotta turn pages now.
Nolan Morgan. Thank you. It is convoluted, so I appreciate the question.
Commissioner, just for a little bit of clarification, those properties in the muted area were included in the overall project boundary because it's part of the tenured subdivision map that would enable the project. As Mr. Tucker stated, a portion of one of those parcels would be included in the project, which is currently part of the homeowner's three and a half acres.
Okay.
So not part of the developed area, but within the overall boundary.
Can I interrupt for just a quick question? Is that property included in the general plan and zoning changes?
I believe it would be excluded.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Deborah.
Let's see, pages L2, A1.0, A2.2. It's all of the left elevations on every one are very, very plain. And you have this beautiful design work, and there's gonna be a side facing somebody that's extremely plain around the windows. So if you could do shutters or some other architectural enhancement, I think would be much better for the neighbors.
Noted. Thank you.
And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I was going to bring up the side elevations myself. They're really sad. Okay, so, and I had a question about the house and the tennis court, so you've answered that. I think you have a nice entrance to the project. And I think the sidewalk and street trees along Sycamore, that side of the project is going to definitely enhance Sycamore. So that's good. I look forward to seeing your landscaping plan.
Me too, for the record.
Since you have the HOA, are they gonna require that the garages be used for parking cars and not storage? All right, well, I think that's all my questions for right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Couple of questions. What are you gonna do with the goats?
The goats?
I was out there, and there must have been 20 goats. And they had a goat shepherd, whatever it was, he was out watching the goats. It was, anyway, just something, it was an observation.
They're doing weed control out there. It's a business model for some.
There is some grading encroaching into the property to the west. Justin, I'm assuming you have a, you've got a grading agreement, approachment agreement?
We're working towards that, yes.
Okay.
It's a mutually beneficial grading operation, so we anticipate that being successful.
I think, you know, the site layout does work really well. The cul-de-sacs give really adjacent, or give you additional playground.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's where the community's gonna gather, in those cul-de-sacs. As was previously mentioned, the exteriors need to be significantly enhanced. They're just a little vanilla right now. On the streetscape along Sycamore, we've got about 600 lineal feet of six-foot-high concrete block wall. I think it would be good to have some type of articulation where there's not just 600 lineal feet. I mean, we've got some pilasters there, but something to create a little bit more interest.
Okay.
Along that streetscape, I think that would help the project. And then the, there's an easement there along Sycamore. Is that landscaping going to be maintained by the HOA? Or is that city property and the city is maintaining that?
I don't know the answer to that question. I'll have to take a look at both the plan and then talk to our civil engineer and our planner.
Chris, do you know whether or not that's city-maintained, or is that HOA-maintained?
I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
Vice Chair, may I ask specifically what location you're asking? Is this in the rear yards along Sycamore here on the right-hand side, the trees, et cetera?
Well, we've got 600 feet, about 600 feet here.
Yes.
And there's a 10-foot, it's not 10 feet, it's 31 feet, well, from the property line.
Right, right.
From the probably back of sidewalk, you probably have 15 feet of landscape screening before you come to that concrete block wall.
Okay. So specifically, who's maintaining and who owns that piece of property?
Yes.
Okay.
Because if, coming back to landscaping, I don't know if the city has jurisdiction over what's landscaped there or if you, as the developer, does.
So I just confirmed with our engineer, that will be part of the project. Those improvements will be subject to the conditions of approval of the project, and that would be owned and maintained by the HOA.
Oh, okay. Great. That's it. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Kramer, did you have additional questions? Okay. Commissioner Garrison?
There are sidewalks on both sides of the street throughout the project, correct? That's kind of what I read into it.
That's correct.
All right. Second question, maybe Chris would know the answer to this. The ballparks, the Optimus Ballfields and the park at the top of the hill, is there access at the end of Watson up to those?
Not to my knowledge, Commissioner. There's, I believe there's...
Private property between the end of Watson and the park up there? I don't necessarily mean the Optimus Park, but I'm talking about the public park at the top.
Commissioner Garrison, there is no direct access. You're talking about all the way to the top at the park? There is no direct access.
To the playgrounds and so forth.
Right. There is no direct connection there.
Okay, I didn't think so, but I thought that would be a great plus for the project.
Commissioner Looney?
One other question. On the very end of Watson, and Chris, it's probably more for you, there's a service drive. Apparently, I don't know if there's sewer or water utilities that come in that area near the creek. There's also a pedestrian path that runs along the backside of that other development. Will, right now, that pedestrian path basically stops at that service drive coming off of Watson going towards the creek. Will that pedestrian path be continued behind the proposed project? Or is that outside the, maybe that open space easement that's closer to the creek? I don't know if it continues any further than the development to the north or not.
It doesn't, to my knowledge, no. As far as coming south on the other side of Watson? I don't believe so.
Okay. And where does it go to the north?
I believe it wraps entirely around the Sycamore Estates Phase 1 plan. I believe it's somewhat surrounds the residences, from what I've seen.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm glad to provide more color on that, if you care to hear. Yeah. There is a service road here. It begins right about there after you get into the Sycamore Estates. It serves a large detention basin and water quality basin right here for the service road. The trail does end there. If you were to walk that trail, I've done it a couple of times, it loops around the cul-de-sac and then terminates right up here, just short, maybe four or five homes short of the end of the track.
Now, well, there, I did, there is a couple of private gates, and I think that gate serves this home. So that really all will stay somewhat rural unless the owner of the home decides to do something with it. So you're completely outside that.
That's correct.
And the city isn't gonna require any additional modifications to that property.
That would be up to Mr. Morgan. That's his property there with the creek.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some questions for you.
Great.
I'm concerned about maintenance of the slopes, front yards. What's the HOA gonna maintain typically in your projects? Side and rear yards maintained by the homeowners? Who's gonna maintain the slopes? How's that work in your vision?
Yeah, great question. In normal circumstances, we'll put together a HOA budget. Within that budget, we'll have identified everything that is either going to be owned and maintained by the HOA or owned by an owner and maintained by the HOA.
Okay.
And so as we put together our legal documents for the Bureau of Real Estate, that all is very closely scrutinized to make sure that we're funding it properly for the ongoing maintenance of whether it's shrubs and trees or whether it's actual clubhouse, pool, and tot lot equipment. It all has a schedule of values and a maintenance record, a maintenance manual recommendations. And so all the areas that are designated as HOA-maintained and owned would be budgeted appropriately and managed by the HOA.
And the slopes that are within private yards, are they gonna be maintained by the HOA? So there's consistent maintenance?
Any slope within a private yard would be within the exclusive use area of the homeowner and would be the responsibility of the homeowner, if it's inside their perimeter walls or side yard fences.
Chris or Pat C., does the city standards, isn't there a standard where over a certain height there has to be common maintenance of slopes in our ordinance?
Not to that extent, no.
Okay. Thinking of another city. All right.
Walls, yes. If we did have walls that needed to be planted, that would be HOA-maintained requirement.
We're gonna move on to our next phase where we go through and discuss amongst ourselves the various aspects of the project, architecture, site plan, everything. But let me tell you, one of my major concerns while we're here is the 10-foot rear yards that you've proposed. In several cases, along Sycamore and elsewhere in the project, you have a 10-foot rear yard setback, a five-foot retaining wall, and then there's a six-foot screening wall that on Sycamore. And I'm just concerned about how livable that space is gonna be. And I'm concerned about it. I think the industry standard for rear yard setbacks is like 15 feet, like five-yard side yard setbacks. So I know that increasing the depth of lots across your project, you're gonna lose units. So I'm sympathetic with that. But I still think that the depth of the rear yards is, and especially the amount of retaining walls that you've got on the project is a concern to me. So, anyway.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman, for that question. If you'd like, I would, I'm glad to kind of weigh in a little bit on that because, you know, I will say we are meeting the setback requirement for the rear yards of 15 feet in all cases. What we're proposing is consistent with the zoning ordinance. What you're suggesting, though, about having a 10-foot, flat, usable area in your backyard and then a five- or six-foot or a four-foot retaining wall is a valid and good observation. We're trying to balance very delicately the grading as well as the livability. And the site plan, you kind of tighten one screw over here and three pop on the other side. So that is kind of resultant of trying to make sure that we're creating a community that's very livable, has a great aesthetic on a street scene, but yet provides enough outdoor living space. I will offer, most of the modern architecture that maybe you see before you has smaller yards than that, whether it be indoor/outdoor space. Most buyers today and most buyers at this price point aren't expecting a large pool-sized yard, enough for their pet to go outside, enough to entertain outside, but certainly not a gracious... not a gracious large yard. If we can make any of the yards larger than 10 by adding a course of wall or two, then we're going to do that. And we're kind of early at the grading stage, but that's a good observation and something that we have to sell the homes to. And so that's a consideration we take very seriously.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, let's move on and move through--
Thank you all.
--the aspects of the project and give the applicants some additional feedback on where we're at. I think in this case, we, Commissioner Garrison brought it up, so I think we should talk about the general plan and zoning. Any concerns about the medium density, 10 dwelling units per acre on the site? Commissioner Garrison?
Just a general concern about the density compared to the neighbors. Again, trying to be consistent with the concerns of the City Council.
Yep. Okay. Commissioner Looney?
I think it's creative in the way that they've still called it condos, but created the equivalent of single-family homes.
Mm-hmm.
For the last two-plus years that I've been here, all we see is these block buildings of condos. And for granted, there are some narrow side yards, but it's better than something else in a traditional condominium project. So that's, I really don't have any issue with the zoning.
Okay. Personally, I think the medium-density designation here makes a lot of sense because of Sycamore and the amount of traffic that's on that street. This is kind of a stepping down of densities from the Shadow Ridge project to the west. So personally, the medium-density designation was, is acceptable. So why don't we move on to the site plan? Any comments on the site plan and the layout of the project? Commissioner Jackal?
Well, I would just like to say that I really like the cul-de-sacs. I think that makes a huge difference compared to the original plan. I just, I really like that.
I have to comment that in my previous lifetime, working on the O'Teit Ranch, we worked really hard to get a grid system of streets, and I like the original proposal better, but that's the difference between Vista and Chula Vista right now. So, any other comments on site plan? Okay. I appreciated the enhanced architecture, especially for those units that are going to back onto Sycamore and onto Watson Way. And the rest of the commissioners had some concerns about some of the blank walls, but I thought there was an effort, which we haven't seen before, for enhancing the architecture that's going to be visible from the public right away. So that was my comment. Other commissioners have commented that they want to see some more work on the side elevations. So I think you heard that comment.
Commissioner Garrison?
You just said what I was going to say.
Okay. Sorry. All right. Our next item deals with parking and traffic. Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that, as usual, parking will remain to be an issue no matter what we build. I just hope you have a very, very, very strong HOA and have the parking guy looking in garages because it's just horrible. People look at the garage as a place to store stuff and not to store their car. So even though it's, the parking that you're proposing is in excess of what the requirements is, there'll never be enough parking. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And then our last item is landscape and amenities. Any comments on the landscape and amenities? Nope. I was just thinking during your presentation, you talked about the dog lots that you're going to have. I think there are going to be a lot of kids in this project, and the outside play area on the individual lots is somewhat limited. If you were asking me, from my own personal opinion, I would tell you to build a grass playfield for kids to kick a ball around on. Otherwise, you're going to be out in the cul-de-sac. People with dogs have their rear side yards for their dogs. So just my own personal opinion on that. Anything else on landscaping? I'm going to be interested when the project comes back to see who's going to maintain what. Front yard landscaping by the HOA, so there's consistent maintenance. For slopes, especially those over five feet, at some point, you may have to go to a planable crib wall. I think that would be preferred than retaining walls. Maintenance of the walls, both interior and exterior, is going to be a concern. Want to, going to want to know how you're going to address that and who's going to be responsible for what. So, okay. Any other comments? Okay. That concludes our early design review for your project. Thank you very much for bringing it in. It's a good start, and hopefully, did you have any questions from us, of us? Okay.
With respect to the Watson Avenue, it's planned that the west side of that, I guess it's the south, right, that we will be improving the southern side of that. I just wanted to note that that will be improved there. Currently, there's not a full width improvement--
Sure.
--on Watson Way, and there will be additional open parking there. It's city parking--
Parking?
But that does further into, you know, not everybody's going to fit in 23 spaces on Thanksgiving.
Right.
So I'm not, I'm not blind to that fact, and I agree with you, there's never enough parking. Hopefully, rideshare will continue to grow. And, you know, I've actually seen a set of CCNRs that had restrictions in it that if you were going to have an event with more than five people, you were supposed to use rideshare for at least two, just because of the parking. So thank you all for your comments very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Good luck. All right. That concludes our public items tonight for our meeting. Commissioners, staff discussion, council actions and reports. Ms. Chow, anything to report?
So we'll be having a meeting on August 1st, and that meeting will actually be fully dedicated for a SEQA presentation by John Hamilton. So he's working really hard to prepare that, to kind of give you all the ins and outs of SEQA. So be prepared for that. Bring some coffee. I'm just kidding.
SEQA.
John Hamilton's not here, so I can say that, I guess. So August 1st, and that's what we know for now as far as planning commission meetings. So just put that on your calendar.
Okay. All right. Very good. Any comments from the rest of the commissioners? Commissioner Garrison?
Just a question maybe for Patsy. This designation of P-170246, at what point in time is that assigned to this project? When it is coming up before the planning commission?
The P-17 number, that's basically assigned at the point where they formally submit. So when they come to the counter and they are submitting for an early design review or it could be a discretionary project, then the staff, the planning staff taking the project in plugs it in into the computer system and that number comes up.
The reason I'm asking is if you try to look projects up on the website, it's by name, like this one, I believe, is Sycamore Avenue and Watson Way. So it sometimes is difficult to find the one you're most looking for. I don't know if there's a way to kind of cross-reference those to make it easier for the general public and those of us that don't go onto the website every other day to, you know, kind of get an update. And I don't know what your thoughts would be. I don't know how often that website is updated.
And you're speaking of the interactive map?
Yes, the interactive map.
Yeah. And Michael actually updates--
That's a great tool.
It is. It is. And we get a lot of calls complimenting the city on that because it does provide some immediate access to the projects that we currently have in the city. Michael updates that map off and on with the staff and trying to bring it up. And it doesn't have the, remind me, Michael, I don't know if I, the P numbers are not on it on the interactive?
The P numbers aren't on it. However, this project wouldn't go on the map until we got a formal entitlement application.
True.
So this is just an early design review, but once we get a formal application in, then it would be incorporated into the map. So anytime we have a new entitlement application submitted, that's when it's automatically put on the map. I usually do that within a week or two after the application's been submitted.
I just think it would be great if the general public would go on there more frequently and those who are looking, and if they can cross-reference to the project that they're most interested in. You know, I know it's by street, and that's maybe as good as we can do at that point. But your thoughts on it as we go forward would be much appreciated, though, so we could make it easier to cross-reference for people to find those interactive maps and, you know, see what's happening in their neighborhood once they see the big yellow sign go up.
Yeah, we can definitely include the application number on the individual items within the map. You'd be surprised how popular the map is. I mean, we've gotten some real positive responses from the community--
Great.
--in terms of providing, you know, disclosure and transparency in terms of, you know, what we're working on and what to expect in the future. So we've gotten a positive response. But we can put the application numbers on there, try to make it a little bit more user-friendly and give a little bit more information.
I mean, I realize we're always going to hear, well, how come I didn't know about it in spite of the interactive map and the big yellow sign on the location and so forth. But still, the more we can do to get the general public informed to what's happening, the easier it's going to be for us to make these, everything we do represent the community. Thank you.
Commissioner Bell?
If any commissioners are interested, I came across an article in The Times on Monday about California housing. I don't know if you guys saw this, but it referenced a bill in California, looks like Senator Weiner is introducing it right now, that would apply new standards to force cities to streamline housing. So it's out there. If you want to read it, it's pretty interesting just to see where, what direction things are heading. And I, Patsy was nice enough to provide me with whatever the most updated numbers were we have, and I think we're probably in pretty good shape. I feel like things are pretty positive as far as approvals here go, but it's definitely something to look at as far as how housing is being dealt with in California right now. So, highly recommended.
Okay. Commissioner Looney?
Patsy, could you give us an update on a couple of things? One, there was a, I don't know, I think it was an apartment project proposed on South Santa Fe and Mar Vista. I think that is coming up, but to expire soon.
Yeah, that South Santa Fe and Mar Vista, Ten Winslow's project across from Cypress, it created a lot of neighborhood concerns across the street. That project is actually back in review. Chris actually has that project. They are proposing that it is a lesser amount of units and they're not apartments this time. So they're going to be, they're actually in review right now, so it is going to come back to you.
Wasn't it, didn't we see an early design review for a small-lot, single-family on that site?
I believe that. Did that come before? I believe it came back.
These will be attached condominiums or proposed.
And they were, they had an early design review. I believe they came already.
Yeah.
It was a detached one.
Yep.
And then we've got a fence around 100 Main Street. They've been a fence up a long time.
That's very true. I will not negate that. And we are waiting for the developer to come forward.
Okay. And then the last one, are plans still moving forward for the extension of the South Santa Fe?
The next phase, Paseo Santa Fe?
Phase two.
Yeah, that is in the works, so that's alive and well as far as the next phasing is concerned.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Our student commissioners have graduated and/or moved on?
Yes, and Joanie was actually sharing with me, I believe, one of the students would like to come back. I think he was in his junior year, so he's able to come back one more year. But the other one, I think, yep, graduated and going on in college, I'm sure.
Does the city do anything to thank them? Give them a certificate or?
I am not sure on that. I don't--
He's shaking her head.
The city council--
Okay.
--at the end of the year, they'll--
Get together. Nice.
Be great to get a certificate or something.
I was thinking about it, and we didn't say goodbye to him after the, you know--
The reason I know that is because he misspelled one of their--
Oh!
And he called and asked if we could fix it, which the city clerk does. The city clerk does that.
Okay.
And does it for the city council to give the recognition.
Super.
All the student commissioners.
Very good. Any other comments or concerns? Commissioner Garrison?
Yeah. Any update on the proposed changes to the state cell tower regulations that would basically limit the city's ability to do certain things? And it would be basically up to the state to do it?
Are you speaking of SB 649? I think Joanie was sharing some stuff with us today, and yeah, some things came out in the league and some news about it passing. So I guess we're all going to be looking to see what's going to happen now with less control. But I guess we all kind of knew was coming. And Mr. Stone looks like has some information on that.
It may have passed today, but I thought it was going through committees right now. Has it actually been, you know, gone through full vote for the Assembly and Senate? I'm not sure.
I don't know.
I didn't read the full detail of it, but it appeared to be, but just--
That would be unfortunate because, of course, it would limit our authority.
Would that not basically allow any cell tower company to post a cell on any public property such as light posts and so forth? Isn't that basically what that does without going through the city?
It would make it into a ministerial process. Of course, there's a review for compliance with things such as the building codes. There's a process by which there has to be a payment of certain amount of, you know, a fixed fee to the city, which is actually would be less money than the city currently is likely to receive. And I'd have to take a closer look. I think it applies within the commercial and industrial areas. I'm not sure it would apply within the residential areas, but it would be, once adopted, definitely there'd be a closer review and we'd then better understand--
But the industry seems to be going to smaller cells, but closer together.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's why they're focusing on that, right?
Okay. If there are no other comments, we're adjourned till August 1st.